It looks like the time has arrived to call the regular meeting of the City Commission to order, and we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are copies of the agenda available on the recorder's desk as well as at the back of the room. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Any corrections, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We have an agenda. Minutes. We have several minutes from different meetings. Anyone care to make a motion? Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the various meetings.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Communications. We have one communication regarding the security system that's being installed at the Gillum Recreation Center and some adjustments here at City Hall. Any questions regarding that? You don't need any action taken on that, correct?
No.
Okay. Hearing that, communications are received and filed, and I believe we have our county commissioner here with us this evening.
Good evening, everybody, and Happy New Year. I want to tell you there's going to be, the Area Agency on Aging 1B is hosting a community forum on Thursday, February 18th, 10:30 to noon, at the Waterford Senior Center, 3621 Huntington Woods Road. This is an opportunity, it's a town hall, for people to weigh in on senior issues and how Oakland County, how the Area Agency on Aging should be spending their funding from the federal government, from the state, how to allocate. It's an opportunity for people to voice their opinion. They do encourage residents to go there. I will be there that morning. Some of the things that we are approving at tomorrow's board meeting is the Sheriff's Department has gotten some grant funding and done training so in their cars where they can administer this NarCam, and they've saved, I think, 18 lives so far. So if they are called out on a heroin overdose situation, they have it in their vehicles. And it's hoped that there will be more future funding to train Huntington Woods and other communities and have this tool available. It's very simple to use and...
We have it all ready.
You do?
Yeah.
Oh, congratulations. That's great to hear. I don't know, have we used it? Not yet. That's a good thing. So, but that's great to know that we have it. I also, for low-income residents, seniors, people on fixed incomes, you have the ability to delay paying your taxes until April 30th to receive your homestead, your tax check ahead of time. And if you want to delay paying, you need to contact our city and let them know that you're going to be, you know, paying your taxes later. And we passed a resolution confirming that, like we do every year. And I remind seniors that it's available. And I also am introducing a resolution on the Public Act 269 of the county as well. So we will be able to talk about village locally, so. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Public participation. This is an opportunity for those in the public who want to address something that is not an agenda item, to come forward. Please come forward to the microphone, introduce yourself and your address. Thank you.
My name is Kathleen. My name is Deena Cower. I live at 105151D. I'm here to discuss a very disturbing chain of events. I don't know if any of you have been surprised by this or not, but this actually began on January 8th, Friday. But last Monday, on the 11th, I went to mail something at the mailbox on 11 Mile Road, and you know, they're back-to-back, and one faces the DPW. And the one, that's where I went to mail something. I rolled down my window, and my heart sunk, because scrawled on the sticker that gives the times for the pickups was a swastika. To the left of that was a piece of tape, a black tape, and I could see there was something underneath it, but I couldn't tell what it was. I took a photograph of it, and I have photographs I wanted to share with all of you, because this happened really once. I went to the police department, and there wasn't an officer there at the moment. I did speak to the person at the desk, the young woman. I gave her, I just told her what had occurred and showed her the picture. She took my name, and she said that a police report, an incident report would be made. At that point, I went home and I took the photographs that I had taken, and I posted them online. I wanted to see if I was going to get any feedback. An hour later, I get a text from my friend Lisa Bronstein, who's also sitting here. Turns out, she was the one who took the photograph that she texted me, and I'll show you that as well, of the one that had occurred on Friday. And she had also gone to the police department, and an incident report was created. After that, I called the Anti-Defamation League so that they could document an anti-Semitic event, and they did so. And we talked about what should be done next, and we had quite a conversation. What happened was, now knowing that these were two separate incidents where government property was defaced, even though it was in our city, this became a matter for the Postmaster General. So what I did the next day, I came here and I talked to Tony. I wanted to know the location of all the other mailboxes in our city, and I actually drove around the city looking to see if any other boxes had been defaced. And thankfully, none were. I did notice some graffiti on one, and what I did was took down that information. And every day since I saw this, I had been driving by the mailboxes twice a day. So on Tuesday, I drove by twice a day to see if anything was on the other side, or if any other markings were created. And it turns out that that black piece of tape that was on the one that Lisa took the photograph of was, there was a swastika under that, and one of the officers, it was Officer Brockdorff, he said that he took a marker to try and change it, but he did not put the tape over that. And so I drove by on Tuesday, saw that the swastika was still there, and twice, and then Wednesday morning. And when that happened, I decided that I was going to go over to the Royal Post Office and report this to the Postmaster there. I did so. He was visibly, visibly upset about what I was showing him. I showed him the photographs as well. And he told me that he did not understand why his carriers had not already taken care of this and had not replaced the sticker. So he told me that he would immediately have a sticker put on there, and this was Wednesday. And, you know, he said that he would take care of it, and I went by, I had an appointment, and at about 3:30 in the afternoon, I went by. I spoke with him about 1 o'clock in the afternoon. And there was no replacement sticker then, however, I don't know, there was one Thursday morning, first thing, so I don't know if it was done late Wednesday or Thursday morning. So I drove by three times on Thursday to see if any markings were created. There were, there were none. Friday, there was nothing. It was still clean. Saturday, I went by, still clean, and I went by mid-morning. I did not go by later in the day, and I did not go by on Sunday. But yesterday, I went by, and I saw that there was, someone had taken a Sharpie and had gone over a couple of different areas, and I took a photograph of it, and I looked at it very closely, and the one on the left side, and I'm just going to give you all three photographs. You can't see in the third photograph the swastika. It was visible to the naked eye, though, and Officer Jordan is here, and he saw it. Yesterday, we inspected it together. He created another incident report. It looked like somebody had tried to either remove the sticker, because it was buckled at the top, and when that failed, this was in ballpoint pen that they did it, and this is the third incident, it looked like they tried to rub the area of the sticker, to rough it up so that they could draw on it, okay? And what I found out when I went to the police department was that, was it you, Officer, that covered it with Sharpie?
Yes, sir.
Or was it? Okay, yeah. That he covered it with Sharpie yesterday, and in both spots, to not even give them a chance to do it on the other side. So that was done. I then, I, actually, I left out one thing. On Friday, because I wanted to get some information from an officer, I walked back into the police department and spoke, I asked to speak with an officer, and Officer Brockdorff was there. It turns out that he never made an incident report when I came in on the previous Monday, because there was a miscommunication. He had no idea that a second incident had occurred. So he created one in that moment, and I did, I wanted to ask him something, because I wanted to be able to tell all of you this. I wanted to know if any more people besides myself and Lisa had actually reported these incidents. And it turns out that of the hundreds of people who go by these boxes every day, which is the most disheartening thing in all of this, is that nobody, nobody went and told anybody in the city. Nobody went and told the police. Nobody said anything. We can't be the only two that saw this. And I did speak to the Anti-Defamation League again this morning and told them what had occurred, that we had a third incident, and she was very upset and said that usually, these are one and done, that this is really, this is an atypical event, that somebody keeps coming by. And clearly, they are coming by on a day, I would imagine, I don't know this for a fact, but I would imagine that they're coming by every day to check to see if their handiwork still remains. Today, both areas, I'm assuming the police department did this, but now that box is blacked off on the sticker, so nothing can be done. I'm actually waiting for them to try and scratch something into that. And I went by twice today to check to see if that was done. It was not. She has reached out, the first report I made to the ADL, it's Heidi Budain, who is the Director of the ADL, and she reached out to the FBI, the investigatory branch of the Postal Service, and she was calling them again today as well. Now, I am incredibly upset about this. I am the daughter of a Holocaust survivor, and this affects me on another level, but I would imagine that anybody who sees this would be outraged. Some of the feedback that I've gotten from people in the city who have been told about it are saying that they feel like this is a kid, this is a prank, they think it's funny. That doesn't fly with me. That doesn't fly with anybody I know who knows, and we all know what a swastika means, okay? What it symbolizes. It symbolizes, it's a form of intimidation, it's a threat, it tries to instill fear in people, and it's unacceptable that it's occurring here. What we would like to see happen, Lisa and I have discussed this, what we would like to see happen, if it's possible, to catch this person, and the only way that we can catch this person, and it looks pretty evident on those photographs, that they have a, they have a signature in how they create this swastika. So in my mind, it's the same person. We need a camera outside. We need something there so that we can see who's coming by. They're taking the time to do this. They're taking the time, I'm sure, to come by every day to check, and that is what I'm asking for from the commission. Lisa reached out to the Director of the Detroit Jewish Federation yesterday and received an email from him, their Community Director of Security is going to be reaching out to our police department. They feel that it's important that we do put a camera there. When I spoke to the Postmaster today, I discussed this with him, and it kind of went back and forth, because they can't put it on city property, and city property, and the city is saying that they can't put it, because it involves government property, so we need to have something done. So I just, that is the reason I'm here tonight, to try and affect this, because this is unacceptable, and this should not be happening in our community. I've lived here for 33 years, and the most recent event was the one that happened a few years ago, when somebody snapped swastikas in the snow in front of a couple of Jewish family homes here. And I want to see this end. I want to see this end. I want to see this person caught.
I was made aware of this today by our City Manager, and she did report to me that we have stepped up surveillance of our own officers doing drive-bys.
Right, yes. Officer Brockdorff told me that he put it in the police bulletin so that they would be more vigilant.
Right.
Correct.
And I think we can certainly look into working with...
We could take into, we could look into whether that it's possible to put a surveillance camera on. Okay. We'll look into it. Okay. Thank you. Because I'm still going to be driving by every day, you see, and I will report anything else that I use, but...
Well, it sounds to me, you know, whatever their motivation is, presume it's bad. It doesn't make any difference whether if they think it's a prank or not. It's not a prank.
It's not a prank.
In any way, shape, or form. I'm just wondering, with all the high-tech stuff that's out there now, and how relatively cheap it seems to be becoming, because I've considered this for my own parking lot in my building, whether or not we could have a surveillance camera. I would ask, well, first of all, I personally don't, we can survey anything we want to in front of Huntington Woods. That post those two mailboxes, I am, I don't know for sure, but I'm reasonably sure they're on Huntington Woods' city property. So I think we can survey those two things, and you can see where it's going. The chief would agree that in law enforcement now, look at City Detroit, with the gas station cameras and the high-intensity imaging there to try to cut down, I don't see why we couldn't have a camera that could be used, let's just say it's not there, but it's somewhere else that we might be able to use that's wireless, that could be monitored inside the police station, where it's right there if they want to see it. And, I mean, the technology is becoming cheaper and cheaper to do it. I understand there are people that are going to say, "Well, I don't want to be on camera when I'm mailing a letter," but I'm reasonably confident, if you go to the Royal Post Office, when you're out in front of the post office, somehow you're on a camera there. I'm reasonably certain of that. So that's, this is the world we live in today. And so I would, rather than make a formal motion, I'd just ask if our City Manager would, it can't be much, virtually every catalog you open these days has something like that. It's got to be just a few hundred dollars. And I think that I completely agree with everything you've said, and, anywhere, but here, we're not going for that. You can't ask the police to, you know, usually when they're there, they're looking for me going 45, they're not looking for somebody to come up onto the mailbox. So I doubt it's happening during the period when an officer is sitting anywhere near there. It's likely happening at night or something, when somebody can run up and just do it. So I would, if this is satisfactory to you, as a temporary resolution, ask our City Manager to find out how much it would be. I don't think it's very much. If it's very, very reasonable with our, with our Public Safety Department, I'm sure that can be available to be used, not just there, but to be used someplace else if we need it, or whatever the scenario may be. This is the world we live in, so for a few hundred dollars, or whatever it would be, I don't think it's a big deal. And if the post office doesn't want to do that, too bad, because they probably have to come to us to get permission to put it on our building anyway.
That's what I was told today.
Right. Well, that, but that's, so I don't see why we can't survey our own property.
Right.
And I agree with everything you've said, and I appreciate your, and your feelings are well-known and well-shared, particularly by this person.
Absolutely. Thank you. I really appreciate that. I mean, these are, they might be small in size.
It's not, it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter what the enormity of what they represent...
It doesn't matter if it's spray painted, the size on the building, or anything.
No, no. What I'm saying is, they might be small in size, but the enormity of what they represent can stress, or not.
The amount of hate is just as bad.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. All right.
It's not acceptable. It's also illegal.
Exactly. Exactly. On many levels. I mean, this is government property, it's...
But you got to catch them.
Right, exactly. And it's a hate crime.
Well, there's the Hate Crimes Act, so I mean...
Right. And they're defacing government property as well, so, you know.
Mr. Mayor?
Good deal.
All right. Thank you very much.
I would agree with Commissioner Olson, and I think that we do need to invest in something to monitor that site. I don't know, our chief is in the audience, I don't know, Chief, if you can comment, because this is a pending investigation or not, if there's anything you can share maybe about what the department's doing in this regard?
At this point in time, obviously, we've increased patrols, and it's right for our station, cars are in and out all the time. However, it could be happening at 3:00 in the morning, probably not. So the camera would be the way to go. It'd have to be a recorded camera, not a monitoring camera, because we aren't in the station 24/7, which wouldn't be a problem. We were looking at cameras right now for our parking lot for the city. So it's, the time, the timing's right for the cameras now, because we were just, and we've already just approved that just now. So, we talked about it. So absolutely. And that would really, that would, and the cameras, the way they are now, too, will be able to pick up the license plate of the cars, and be able to really depict what they're doing. Because they could actually be putting in an envelope and writing while they're doing it, but those cameras are so accurate now, we'll be able to pick that up. So that's, that's an idea.
Good. Yeah, I don't know if you want the pictures. Do you need those pictures at all, so?
We have the photos, too.
Okay, all right. Yeah.
Thank you for bringing that to the conversations.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much for hearing me. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public participation?
Good evening. David Sloan, 8050 Lincoln, Huntington Woods. In the last month, I've had the privilege to go and sit in on a planning commission meeting and on a senior advisory commission meeting, and there were wonderful materials, wonderful PowerPoint programs, slideshows, materials given to everyone. And I'd like to see these posted on our website. I came before this commission in November, saying that it would really be good for all the residents to have committee meetings videotaped, broadcasted, streamed, and so that we can know what you know. And, I mean, even, I know you had a tour of the George W. Coon train, would like to see a report on that. So I would, I would ask you to, again, look at this issue. In the last two months, I have not heard from staff. I heard from one commissioner, and I thank her for contacting me. And so this is, this is important for all residents, and I ask you to please continue to, to set this up. We need to be aware of what's going on in the committees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan, for your comments. I can tell you that there has been some discussion about that, and I'm positive it will be an issue that we discuss in our next budget process as we go forward in formulating the entire budget. So be patient with us, but it will be a topic of conversation. Any other comments? Okay. Seeing non-public participation is closed, there will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Presentations. A matter of swearing in, some new public safety sergeants. Chief, would you like to lead off on that?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. I'm very proud and honored tonight to announce the promotions of two sergeants, Jason Jordan and Jason Brockdorff. Jason, if you would welcome, uh, Jason Jordan. That was one of the qualifications you had, you know, Jason. It was a very long process. It takes about 10 weeks. It's three-step. There's a written exam, an oral exam with three outside chiefs, two Oakland County chiefs, and one Wayne County chief. I'm not sure how the Wayne County chief counted. No. And also, an evaluation from the lieutenants, and, as I said, the written exam. Jason Jordan stands to my right. Jason Jordan is a 15-year veteran of Huntington Woods Public Safety Department. He graduated from the United States Air Force Community College in 2014 with an Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice. Jason also received an Associate's Degree in Fire Technology from School Crab College in 2006. Jason received a top academic award from the Wayne County Regional Police Training Center in November of 2000. Jason also received the Honored Graduate Award from the United States Air Force Police Academy in December of 1994. Jason is also a paid-on-call fire lieutenant at the Northville Fire Department, and has been employed with the fire department for 22 years. His additional training, knowledge, and experience has been extremely beneficial to us here at Huntington Woods. In addition, Jason is a state-certified company officer, which enables him to command fire ground operations. Jason is also a state-certified EMS instructor coordinator, which grants him the authority to train our officers to the medical first responder level and to certify all city employees in CPR and AED operations. Jason, thank you for, thank you for your service to our country, and thank you for your loyalty and dedication to the department and the citizens of Huntington Woods. Your promotion to the rank of sergeant is well-deserved. Congratulations.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
I solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Huntington Woods.
And the Charter of the City of Huntington Woods.
Oakland County, Michigan.
Oakland County, Michigan.
And I will endeavor to secure...
And I will endeavor to secure...
And maintain an honest...
And maintain an honest...
An efficient administration...
An efficient administration.
Of the affairs of said city of Huntington Woods.
Of the affairs of said city of Huntington Woods.
Free from partisan distinction...
Free from partisan distinction.
Or control...
Or control.
And that I will perform the duties of...
And I will perform the duties of...
Public safety sergeant...
Public safety sergeant.
Of the City of Huntington Woods...
Of the City of Huntington Woods.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, buddy. You all right? [laughter]
Jason Brockdorff graduated from Michigan State University in 2002 with a Bachelor's Degree in Criminal Justice. In addition, during his Bachelor's Degree at MSU, Jason completed a 10-week Homeland Security Program. Jason was very successful in his academic career. He received top academic awards from McComb Police Academy, from the McComb Fire Academy, and from the Oakland Community College Medical First Responder Course. Jason has eight years' experience working in police and fire service. He started his police career at Chesterfield Township Police Department in 2008. The experience and knowledge that he gained in a large department helped him to excel his proficiencies and his qualifications to become a commanding officer. his proficiencies and his qualifications to become a commanding officer. Jason, thank you for your loyalty and dedication to the department and the citizens of Huntington Woods. Your promotion is well-deserved, congratulations.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Huntington Woods.
And the Charter of the City of Huntington Woods.
Oakland County, Michigan.
Oakland County, Michigan.
And that I will endeavor to secure.
And that I will endeavor to secure.
And maintain.
And maintain.
An honest and efficient administration.
An honest and efficient administration.
Of the affairs of said city of Huntington Woods.
Of the affairs of said city of Huntington Woods.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
And I will perform the duties of public safety sergeant.
And that I will perform the duties of public safety sergeant.
Of said city of Huntington Woods.
Of said city of Huntington Woods.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Our next set of presentations is more fun stuff to do. We would like to recognize residents who have served on various boards and commissions over the last, most of them, six years, but whose term has, has come to an end. So I'm gonna go out to the microphone, and I'm gonna read one of these, they pretty much all read the same. I won't reread them each time.
Excellent.
Good idea.
If you could come forward, as I, as I name you, and receive our accommodation. The mayor, can you hear me all right? The mayor and commissioners of the citizens of the city of Huntington Woods would like to thank, in this case Janet Turner, of 12708 Boardman, for six years of service on the, on the city of Huntington Woods Planning Commission. Ms. Turner has served on the Planning Commission of the city of Huntington Woods with honor and distinction, making many fine contributions to the city of Huntington Woods. On behalf of the mayor, city commissioners, and all local residents, I extend our warmest thanks and express our sincere appreciation for your involvement in community affairs.
It was actually 10 years.
10 years?
Yes.
Just on planning, or you were on environmental advisory board before that?
Well, I was on planning 10 years, because I was on, and then it went off, and then it went off.
So, a constant volunteer, just can't get rid of you.
But thank you.
Our next one is for Mike Tripp, who has served on the Recreation Advisory Board. Next up, Cheryl Riskin. Cheryl, I think I saw, no, I didn't see Cheryl here. Cheryl served on our library advisory board for the last six years. We'll make sure she hits that. Jeff Hazen, who has served on the library advisory board.
All right.
Move down to the Recreation Advisory Board.
Yes.
All right.
Another peringle guy.
Mike Schmidt, of 13100 Ledlow, served the last six years. Jonathan Dispro. Jonathan served on the Historic District Commission. I believe for 11 years. 11 years of service, so that's historic. Louise Webelman, who has served for the last six years on the zoning board of the field. And now you're going back to this. Thank you very much for your service. Cheryl Summers. Was served for the last six years.
She's got the extra perm. She showed up, and they're like, you got the extra perm.
She said she misses me, I know.
And Julie Hazen, for six years of service on the Environmental Advisory Board. Do we get them, or is it longer than that?
I think it's been longer.
She's long.
You're not.
I'm never leaving.
I get a ceremonial picture here.
Ceremonial.
There we go.
And we also have Amy Folby, who served the last six years on the Environmental Advisory Arwee Schwartzman, who served for the last six years, I think it's been a lot longer than that, on the Environmental Advisory Board. I think she was on, off, and then back on, and then off. And Melissa Berry, who served for the last six years on the Huntington Woods Library Advisory Board. Thank you very much. Without, without the commitment of all the citizens of this city, we wouldn't be the great place we are, so we thank you very much.
All right, now that all the fun is over, we have to move on to business. Item number one is a bid award. Amy, do you want to take us through the details of that?
Uh, I believe it's once every five years, or 10 years, Tony, or five?
Well, this is new, so this is something that, you know, we've not done this before, but I believe it is due now every five years.
Uh, we need to test our water system. This is a reliability test, it's not a water quality test. That's done on a weekly basis, and we'll have more information available in a future DEQ, based on what's happened in Flint, and want to reassure everybody that our water is clean. But this is not, what this test is for, this test actually is to test the system, to make sure that we have adequate water pressure for fire incidents, and water to get to your home properly. And we also have a representative from the low bid.
Yes, I think we have Dan Habicht here.
Yes.
And...
If there's any, any particular questions about the scope of the study.
One of the things, Amy, I just want to make one brief comment, is that these studies can really take a lot of time and energy. Fortunately, because we are tied to SACWA, we were able to kind of get away with murder on this one, in terms of the cost of doing this. Remember, there are thousands of municipal systems in the state, and so there are all sorts of different flavors and colors of this sort of thing going on. Fortunately, we can do this for a lot less cost than other communities can, because we are fortunate enough to be tied to SACWA. Now, I'll just leave it up to these two gentlemen to give you kind of a line and staff of it briefly, and we'll move forward.
Well, my name's Dan Cabage, from PoliCin Vandenbrink, this is Mike Lebety. We've been talking with Tony, with Claire, and Jay for some time now, very interested in your project. Tony's right, that every five years you are required to perform this reliability study. Our company has done 60 or more throughout the state, numerous ones, we are very familiar with these type of studies. Your system, I think, that has been alluded to, is, is unique, that it's a, it's a very good system for us to work on. No water towers, no booster stations, three points of contact that we will see feeds from, and the proposal that we've put together, we're very anxious and appreciative to be working with the city. Very good project, and along with that as well, we've been in contact with SACWA for months here, and with your representative from DEQ, Abu, who has, will work with us, and will be working with Tony and Claire.
Dan, if you could, in a few words, say what the ultimate goals of doing this would be? I mean, if you were to lay claim to three goals that we need to resolve when this is done, what would those goals be?
Well, what the beauty of this program is, is you will have a capital improvements program, that you can see where your needs are for the city for future, maybe low flow, or a lot of cities have looping issues, those will be brought out in this study. We'll do a review of fire flows, to make sure that pressures are adequate, and make sure that you're up to standards to the latest DEQ requirements. Those are the three key factors we'll find, amongst others, and I know we've got monthly meetings, so we'll be keeping you updated, and as well as the staff.
But this is somewhat of a unfunded mandate, unfortunately, we don't get any dollars from the state to do this. That's not a happy thought. The good news about this is it's coming at a good time, when we're reviewing some of our sewer lines, we have put a lot of effort into doing our water lines, as you folks know, we've done a lot of water main replacement. So today, this is a good time to do this, because it will lead us right where we need to be in understanding what we need to do in the near future, so.
So the agenda item before you is to award the bid to the low bidder, PoliCin Vandenbrink. Of the five or six companies that bid on it, they were the low bidder, and so the staff recommendation is to award that bid.
Mr. Mayor? John, when do you anticipate starting work, and when do you anticipate finishing work?
We do have our project schedule, as soon as we have a kickoff meeting, we've got it tentatively set for end of January. Our timeframe that we've discussed, submitted to SACWA and MDQ would eventually be June 21st. We will probably be ahead of that schedule, it shouldn't take us that long.
So six months or less?
Yes.
And then the finished product will be some type of document that will outline, as our finance director alluded, goals, and will, will you assign costs to these different things as part of the report? So we'll have a comprehensive document that we can use going forward to plan.
Exactly, it's a nice planning tool.
All right, thank you.
Will we get a mapping of the system? Will it be water only, and will you be documenting age of the system by sections?
Yes, from historical data and the records that you have, and provided by SACWA, and what we can find from DEQ, you will have all that documented, a mapping, and hydraulic model for, for the system, water only.
Do we have a motion? So move. Let me read it, though. Moved by, moved by Commissioner Jenks, and seconded by, that the city of Huntington Woods enter into an agreement with PoliCin Vandenbrink Engineers, located at 2960 Lucerne Drive Southeast in Grand Rapids, Michigan 48546, to provide a water reliability study as per specifications bid on December 11th, 2015, for a total cost not to exceed $12,850, and that the professional services agreement is reviewed by legal counsel.
Any other discussion? Public comment? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say that our office is, the office where Dan and I are in is in Farmington Hills, so that you just send the Jeffrey. We're in a 12-mile road, so I'm the man, the office manager, and Dan's going to be the project.
Well, you're in a community that's growing.
Oh, absolutely.
Farmington Hills.
Right.
Grand Rapids is, too.
Yeah, right.
Hey, Michael, I thought you always worked on the other side.
No, I don't. You were mistaken. I know that doesn't happen too often.
Not usually when I see you, right?
Right, maybe I, maybe I need to work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number two is the 2016 pool rates, a matter of considering the recommendations from the Recreation Advisory Board to set the pool rates for the 2016 season. I see our recreation director is here, if we have any questions, or do you have any comments to make here?
I have no comments, I am here to answer any questions.
Do we have a motion to accept the recommendation of a 3% increase?
So moved.
Any questions? All right, hearing none, you're off the hook, Mary.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Budget amendments, and we're missing our finance director.
Mayor, can you, can you get to him? Mid-year, we take a look at the budget that went into effect July 1st, if we make adjustments as necessary. The auditors like you to do it periodically throughout the year, rather than wait to the end to make these budget adjustments. So we are looking at changes to revenue to offset the changes to the expenditure portion, and this is just at a general fund budget.
That's about the lightest I've ever seen this. It's very good for the mid-year budget adjustments. This is almost nothing, it's hard to even bring something as light as this to you, and almost not worth the time and effort it takes to write it, but we're doing well for mid-year, and if you have any questions, I'll try and answer.
Do we have a motion to accept the budget amendment?
So moved.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. If you can keep it that light, adjustments through the end of the year, we'll be very, very happy.
I know, I'm delighted myself, good.
Board and commission committee appointments. Does anyone want to, does anyone else need to make these, those two appointments? Is it commission or mayor all appointments?
I didn't look at that.
Oh my God, the mayor spelled out on that.
I don't know what it is.
I can't believe this.
Mr. Mayor, I'm fairly certain the commission will want to.
You might guess.
I don't, I don't think anything, this is a lot.
Okay. You mean for environmental?
These are too big, yeah.
Yes.
The sheets, their interest fall quite slowly.
They don't.
They don't.
But there was only...
Let's, let's go with the commission. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move we appoint Melissa Levine to the Public Art Beautification and Tree Advisory Board for a three-year term ending December 31st of 2018. And I'll also move we appoint Marcia Meisner, Marcia Meisner, I'm sorry, my apologies, to the Environmental Advisory Committee, a three-year term ending December 31st of 2018.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. And we can notify them quickly, I think one of them gets to go to work in two days.
Wow.
Yeah, Thursday, Thursday.
Okay. Agenda item number five is a matter of considering resolution, expressing opposition to Public Act 269. For those of you who don't know too much about Public Act 269, it was passed in the late-night hours at the state capitol, with a lot of new language introduced at the last minute, and one of those items that got tacked onto it was basically a gag order on locally-elected officials, county officials.
Road commissions, schools.
Road commissions, school boards.
Counties.
From, from discussing anything regarding a ballot issue 60 days prior to the ballot election.
Or televising it.
And that actually goes not only to the members of the body elected, but at their meetings, if someone from the public was to come forward and make a statement regarding the ballot issue, we could potentially find $20,000 for that statement being made in the 60-day period. Somehow, they didn't apply the same rule to themselves, believe it or not, so they are allowed to do that. So this is an opposition to that, to that public act. Anyone else want to say anything about it, or a motion?
One, I'd like to make a motion to support this, and then I'd like to speak to it.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, but my understanding is that there's a, that there's a bill to do it. I mean, candidly, I don't see how this could ever survive a federal court challenge on First Amendment. I mean, it's ridiculous. And it's even more ridiculous that the governor signed it. I mean, it should have been vetoed.
Right.
Immediately. And so it's, I'm more shocked, I guess not by anything anymore that goes on there, but that he would even sign something like this because it's just flagrantly unconstitutional on its face. So, but my understanding is there's supposedly some sort of a remedial bill. I can't imagine what they can do to fix this piece of trash, but apparently they're going to try.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Holsman is right. There actually is a bill. It's being taken up in the House Elections Committee tomorrow. And the bill will not repeal the section that we're requesting to repeal. There's a Democratic bill out there that would repeal the entire gag order. That bill is not being taken up by the Republican-controlled legislature. Instead, the Republican cleanup bill, which is being taken up in committee tomorrow, will allow us to actually tell voters there's an election because this bill currently would not even allow us to communicate to voters that there is an election. It will allow us now to communicate that there is an election. It will allow us to communicate only the ballot language that's approved for the ballot. And it will allow us to discuss the local ballot question at a meeting of the public body, even one that's broadcast publicly, provided that both proponents and opponents have an equal opportunity to discuss it. So it still limits our ability to disseminate any information to the public that is objective like we have done in the past to get information out. And so what they're proposing to fix it is a very, very limited fix, unfortunately.
Still won't, that won't survive a federal court challenge either.
No.
The section, this comes from the Senate bill from last week. It's something that the county supports, the Michigan Municipal League supports, and a number of other groups. It basically takes out the gag order, Section 57. This was something that, it's my understanding, Democratic leadership and Republican leadership are willing to support. There is a House bill which is actually introduced by the same woman who introduced the entire bill, which nobody had a chance to read, and no one supports the House bill. Ideally, it would be great if this whole thing disappeared because we currently do have restrictions on what we can do. We can't take, we can give people facts, but we can't really take positions or start advocating. That's existed for years, and this partially removes, sends it back to that level. There is a hope also that we will get some type of better, you can explain that part, the registration so that absentee voting, but that's a separate piece that's supposed to come through.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And we are forwarding this to.
Everyone.
Everyone. Usually, we list those, city, state representatives, Michigan House representatives, and the Michigan Senate. We should add the governor to that list.
Okay.
Can we also, Mr. Mayor, add the chair of the House Elections Committee? If we could get this there first thing tomorrow morning to her office in Lansing? Because this is going to be up for hearing tomorrow morning, so if we could get a copy to her office, that'd be great. Representative Lisa Lyons, on the west side of the state.
Lisa Posthumous Lyons.
Item number six is the Woodward Avenue Action Association appointment. This is a Benet board that the mayor of the city has been the appointed representative for the city to for years. I actually attended a meeting last week with our former mayor Gillum. And if anyone cares to make a motion, we also asked Bronn if he would consider staying on as the alternate member at this point in time. I think he has, he's been on the board since its inception, and he has a lot of history because of that and a lot of knowledge that I think we can continue to do.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to make a motion to appoint you as our delegate and former mayor Gillum as the alternate to the Woodward Avenue Action Association. I did have lunch with Mayor Gillum today. He did agree to willingly participate if called upon.
When I asked him, he said yes, he would serve, but not forever.
Wow. Well, he didn't mean.
That's a long time. He's good at those open-ended things as we know. You understand the major problem. It's known as money to pay for that building, so you better be planned to find financial resources.
They have a lot of issues, including an entirely brand-new board that just got sworn in last week, and they lost their executive director. So they have a lot of issues.
That may be instructive in the right direction.
I'll second that.
You'll second my comment?
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And on the motion carries. Agenda item number seven is the National League Cities Meeting Authorization. We have, as a policy, always required any travel outside of the state of Michigan to be approved by the City Commission and have tried to restrict it to one out-of-state trip per year, per commissioner. And I'm not sure who all is interested in attending the National League Cities of Congress Conference in Washington, DC on March 5th through March 9th. I know I'm unavailable to attend, and I know Commissioner Jenks would like to attend.
Yeah, I serve on committees.
At this point in time, it is cheaper for us to register the attendees by the end of January. So if we could have a motion to, I don't think it's necessary for the entire commission to go. There are a lot of simultaneous meetings going on, but two or three at the most can certainly cover the meeting. So if we want to have a motion to authorize up to.
So moved.
Up to two?
Three or two. I can't go. Joe just said he can't go.
Okay, up to two, then.
We're self-limited this time. So moved.
Is there a second?
A second. I'd like to add, Mr. Mayor, that I would love to, I would love to go to this meeting. I think it would be a great experience. I did check with my husband's schedule. He's traveling that week. And so being the only caregiver available at this time, I would have to pass, but I would certainly like to consider it in the future. Thank you.
They are great conferences, and the National League of Cities holds another conference, and usually it's in November, December sometimes. That is also a very good conference, a lot of useful information. Commissioner Jenks, it sounds like you are going to have to.
You're already sold.
All money you've got.
A lot of times also staff comes. And one of the things that's advantageous to this for the first time is, for many years, we've never had a budget that lasts for more than two to three months. At this point in time, we've got an approved federal budget, and we will be able to learn a lot about where the money is, learn about it early rather than later. This is where the cabinet secretaries come forward, and they tell you everything they have, and folks get on that right away. If you're asking a question about how did Berkeley know about certain things, about four to five of their commissioners and staff go on a regular basis. If you want to look at Farmington Hills and see why they catch this a lot of times, a number of people go. So all I'm saying is, is that especially this spring meeting, this year will be very, very unique because we have a budget that goes for one year, and they can tell us what they'll spend. I'm very split, schizophrenic, whatever, but I can't show up at all the different breakout sessions. So there is advantage, Amy, for you or Tony also to consider going.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. CDBG allocation adjustment. I think we had, you had some information placed in front of you tonight regarding this item. Amy, you want to take us through it?
This is, we're funding the same programs and same services as we had originally brought to you. There isn't a minimum allocation that the county requires, so we're just sort of shifting the money around from different projects to comply with the county requirements, but money's still going through the same three areas that we've talked about in December.
Actually, somewhat advantageous to us because of the two removal of architectural barriers and transportation services are dollars that stay here at home, so.
Do we have a motion?
Move that the City of Huntington Woods adjusts the allocation of the 2016 CDBG grant program to reflect spending in the following categories: removal of architectural barriers, $3,000; housing rehabilitation, $3,036; and transportation services, $3,000.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Reports and minutes, we have four sets of reports and minutes presented this evening. We have a motion to receive them.
So moved.
Support.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Reports and minutes are received and filed. Report number 306. Motion to approve subject to full audit.
So moved.
Any discussion or questions?
Always call me.
Tony is always available to answer any questions.
Call me anytime. If you have any questions, let me know.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is, requires a roll call vote to recess in the closed session. Following the regular city commission to discuss pending litigation, and we will not be reconvening. Do I have a, is that?
We might be. We might be.
Neither. Okay. We may be reconvening.
Your roll call for that?
When you have a motion first.
Motion to go into executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Support.
Mayor Protem?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. We will reconvene five minutes after the regular session is adjourned. This is one more opportunity now for public participation. We're seeing nothing. We're going to move on to the city manager's report.
I just want to remind the commission about two upcoming city commission dates that have changed from our regular schedule. We moved the February 19th city commission meeting to February 23rd, and also we have confirmed the joint city commission meeting with Burke School District, Oak Park, and Berkeley that will be March 16th at 7:00. They were originally different dates, so. Justice Kielber is coordinating. And that's all.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the city manager? Okay. Commissioner's remarks, start with Commissioner Jenks this evening.
The state legislature has been coming down with a number of bills that mandate that communities do things without giving us money, or that communities notify public utilities one year in advance, or we are going to get fined. One of the things that concerns me is historically, utilities have gone under the roads as the roads have been built. More recently in our city, the, what is it, Detroit Edison, or is it Consumers Power?
Consumers.
Consumers Power is running lines in all of the city's right-of-ways between the city and the sidewalk. I don't know if we're getting maps. I don't know what the depths are. I think it's a complete abuse of local government by the private sector. I would encourage staff to look very closely at this, and I would encourage the Michigan Legal Group, the municipal attorneys, to look very, very closely at some of what's occurring because all of our rights to the control of our right-of-way are being eaten up and taken away by this existing legislature. There is a need to communicate with the governor to veto these bills, and hopefully, subsequent to what's occurred in Flint, he will start exercising his authority. But it's crazy. If we are going to also need to use those right-of-ways between the sidewalk and the street, what happens if we have to dig and we break one of the lines? We're going to be the ones that are sued. We are going to be the ones that are going to be penalized. Unfortunately, Ms. Dig, who is the third party that's supposed to identify all of this stuff, doesn't, from my impression, do a very, very good job. And I hope the city is getting really good mapping on where that is, and that we hire someone to go out and test their mapping and the quality of their mapping. I want to know where it runs in the right-of-way, what the depths are, what the major connections To me, it's just very, very scary, the amount of legislative garbage that is coming out that is taking away the rights of a local community and the rights, Joe can speak to the rights of the local voter, but I mean, I just see corporations, we are going to be fined, and yet they have no obligation to us. And there's a guy swimming over there, I see. Anyway.
It's a move of a taser, Commissioner Jenks.
Oh, I thought he was doing a lullaby.
You are. You are.
Anyway, that's my comments. Remember, keep your sidewalks clear. It's your responsibility. We will get to it when we can. We have postage carriers and a lot of other people that use that. No cars on the street when the snow is running. Thank you.
I used your car.
And so I have no comments. My only comment is I'd like to say a Happy New Year, all back after the holiday, and I think I'm looking forward to a new year, and that is all I have to say this evening.
Commissioner Holsman?
I second Commissioner Iverson, and I have no comments tonight.
Mayor Protem, Roselle?
Just a brief comment, and that is that I had my first cup of Joe with Joe on Saturday at our library. It was a great success. I thank the residents that attended. Lots of good conversation, good questions and good ideas. And the next cup of Joe with Joe will be in April sometime. I'll publicize the date, and it will be a weekday evening. This one was a Saturday morning. This next one will be a weekday evening, and I'll rotate back and forth going forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you. The city calendar, if you're wondering where it is, is at the printer. It's going to be back next Tuesday. We got all our dates correct finally. We got all our dates correct finally, and the Men's Club will be distributing it next week by the weekend for sure. So we apologize for being late, but it will be out soon. One of the most important dates that's in the calendar and is highlighted in there is March 19. It's earlier than normal because of the holidays. That is the date of the Men's Club auction. So put that in your phone calendars right now. Think about stopping by the Rec Center. They should have registration open by the beginning of next week.
Gift forms are available as well.
Gift forms are available at the Recreation Center and at City Hall as well as online at the Men's Club website. HWMA, no. H?
HW.
HWMC.org?
Yes.
Okay. The only thing I wanted to mention was that Congressman Sandy Levin is having a press conference on Thursday at 11:00 in opposition to Public Act 269 that we had a resolution with today. I know our city manager is going to be in attendance, and it's at?
11:00, Romeville City Hall.
Okay. If anyone cares to attend. And with that, I hope everyone enjoys the rest of January. Try to stay warm, and we'll see you next fall. Thank you. You have your journey.